This is the public hearing of the Committee of the Whole regarding Bills Number 240966, 240967, 240968, 240969, 240970, 240971, 240972, and 240973. I want to thank all of you for being here with us this evening. Before we call the roll, I would like to announce that we have translation services available for anyone present at today's hearing. If needed, please go to the table to my left. Services offered in Mandarin and Cantonese. Mr. Christmas, will you please call to roll to take attendance?
Councilman Squiller. Council Lady Gauthier. Councilman Jones.
President.
Councilman Young.
President.
Councilman Driscoll.
President.
Council Lady Lazzata.
President.
Council Lady Bass.
President.
Councilman Phillips.
President.
Councilman O'Neil.
President.
Council Lady Gilmore Richardson.
President.
Councilman Thomas.
President.
Councilman Harity.
President.
Council Lady Amad.
President.
Council Lady Landau.
President.
Council Lady Brooks.
President.
Councilman O'Rourke.
President.
Council President Johnson.
Present. Thank you all for coming up. This committee is present, and this hearing is now called to order. Mr. Christmas, will you please read the title of the bills?
Bill Number 240966, to grant the necessary authorizations for the city to help facilitate development, construction, and operation of a new arena for the Philadelphia 76ers professional basketball team and for other uses, including authorizing the commissioner of public property and such other city officials as may be appropriate on behalf of the city to enter into following agreements and take the following actions. Acquire fee simple title to all the portions of 1001-1025 Filbert Street, 1001-1019 Market Street, and 1025 Market Street together, the Market and Filbert Street properties. Acquire fee simple title to other parcels of land, aerial areas, and subsurface areas in the vicinity of the Market and Filbert Street properties, including without limitation those areas reverting to the city or other parties in connection with the striking of certain aerial portions of 10th Street between Market Street and Filbert Street, the additional properties, and certain other nearby parcels and areas. To enter into ground lease agreement with the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development under which the city would lease to pay all or portion of the Market and Filbert Street properties and the additional properties, if any, and other parcels and subsurface areas the city now owns in the vicinity of those properties, all of which collectively will constitute the arena site. To join in or consent to a sublease and development agreement, the sublease between Pay and either CBL Arena LLC, an entity affiliated with the Philadelphia 76ers LP, or another entity affiliated with the 76ers under which Arena Co. or other 76er-related entities would sublease the arena site and cause an arena to be constructed on it, including a multi-purpose sports and entertainment facility, an ancillary accessory and related amenities, improvements, and infrastructure, and agree to other related conditions. Upon the expiration or termination of the sublease or other circumstances set forth in the sublease, convey fee simple title to the arena site to Pay for disposition to Arena Co., grant, accept, amend, relocate, and extinguish easements, agreements, conditions, covenants, and other restrictions encumbering or benefiting the arena site and any city-owned property adjacent to the arena site for the benefit of the arena site to facilitate construction and operation of the arena. Enter into a street, I'm sorry, enter into a direct operating covenant agreement among the 76ers, Pay and the City, under which the 76ers agree to play substantially all of their regular season and playoff home games in the arena, and take all action necessary and appropriate to accomplish the intent and purpose of this ordinance, all under certain terms and conditions. And Bill Number 240967, authorizing and approving the execution and delivery of a service agreement between the City of Philadelphia and the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development relating to the provision by the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development of certain project-related services to promote, among other things, the growth and expansion of business, commerce, and tourism within the City of Philadelphia in connection with the development of a multi-purpose sports and entertainment facility, including an arena to accommodate National Basketball Association games, family entertainment, community, retail, and other uses. Authorizing and approving the obligation of the City of Philadelphia to pay in full wind due the service fee and other amounts payable under the service agreement and covenanting to make necessary appropriations for such purposes. And authorizing city officials to take necessary or appropriate actions to accomplish the intent and purpose of the ordinance, all under certain terms and conditions. Bill Number 240968, authorizing the revision of lines and grades on a portion of City Plan Number 307 by striking from the city plan and vacating Filbert Street from 10th Street to 11th Street under certain terms and conditions. And Bill Number 240969, authorizing the revision of lines and grades on a portion of City Plan Number 307 by striking from the city plan and vacating certain aerial portions of 10th Street between Market Street and Filbert Street under certain terms and conditions. And Bill Number 240970, authorizing CBL Arena LLC and its successors in interest to construct and maintain various right-of-way encroachments in the vicinity of 1001 to 1019 Market Street, 1025 Market Street, and 1001 to 25 Filbert Street, Philadelphia, PA 19107, under certain terms and conditions. And Bill Number 240971, amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "Zoning and Planning" by amending certain definitions relating to signs, creating an arena area within the Center City Overlay District, and making related changes, including a master plan requirement and changes to accessory sign controls, all in connection with zoning rules for a proposed arena in Center City, and approving a master plan for the arena area under all certain terms and conditions. Bill Number 940972, amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "Zoning and Planning" by revising certain provisions of Section 14906 entitled "Market Street East Sign Regulations," all under certain terms and conditions. And finally, Bill Number 240973, approving the amendment of a neighborhood improvement district in the area generally bounded by and including 11th Street to the west, Filbert Street to the north, 8th Street to the east, and Market Street to the south, with the exception of certain condominium units at 801 Market Street condominium not included in the district, known as the Gallery Neighborhood Improvement District, to remove certain area, to remove certain portions of such property generally bounded by Filbert Street on the north, 10th Street on the east, 11th Street on the west, and Market Street on the south from such district in accordance with the provisions of the Community and Economic Improvement Act, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Christmas. Will you please read the name of our first speaker?
Would Kelly Sheard and Calvin Williams please come forward? Also, would Justin Dula and Emilio Weber also please come forward?
The Chair recognizes Councilman Jamie Gauthier.
I just wanted to be acknowledged as present.
Also want to acknowledge the presence of Councilmember Rue Landau. Also want to recognize the presence of Councilmember Nicholas O'Rourke. Thank you. And also like to recognize the presence of Councilmember Isaiah Thomas.
Kelly Sheard, Calvin Williams, Justin Dula, and Emilio Weber, please come forward. You will each have two minutes to speak.
And also for the record, like to recognize the presence of Councilmember Mark Squiller.
That's why on time means something.
Chair recognize the Councilmember Anthony Phillips. Is anybody else here? Councilmember O'Neil? That's rock and roll. You've got to have a good heart. We're working today. We're working. Please state your name and please begin your testimony.
Kelly Sheard. My name is Kelly Sheard. I'm a West Philly resident and a single mother of a child in Philadelphia Public Schools. I live in the 4th District and have been following along with the proposal for the arena and want to register my grave concerns. As a resident that takes public transportation, I'm deeply concerned that SEPTA, already operating on a shoestring budget, a wing, and a prayer, has already indicated that they cannot assume the cost for the infrastructure changes required to accommodate 76ers fans in this new arena. Who is going to pay for this? I'm deeply concerned that the proposed deal once again allows a major institution significant tax breaks that effectively siphon tax revenue from our school district, which is also operating on a shoestring budget, a wing, and a prayer. The entire premise of payments in lieu of taxes and the promise of jobs, though those jobs aren't the ones paying the family sustaining wages we need, is insulting at best and exploitative at a base level. Finally, as a black woman, I am deeply concerned that opposition to this rushed business-as-usual plan is framed as a concern of a fringe group of Chinatown NIMBYs who are against progress for the city. My black West Philadelphia self stands before you as clear-headed and engaged as ever, and I stand in solidarity against any half-baked plan for any of us that continues to take from us more than it could ever give. Given the incoming federal administration, we need our local government to prioritize the safety and well-being of its residents and not fall for the okie doke. Thank you.
Please state your name for the record and please begin.
Okay. My name is Justin Dula, D-U-L-A, and I'm a resident of the 1st District in the Gaborhood, and I'm here to speak on all of the arena bills with a particular focus on 240966, 240969, and 240971. In addition to being a resident, I'm a certified planner through the American Institute of Certified Planners and currently serve as the Chair of the American Planning Association's LGBTQ Planning Division. Developers often come around, like the monorail salesman from The Simpsons, with an exciting, flashy, time-limited offer. I know it's a dated reference. If folks don't recognize it, you can look it up sort of after the hearing as a way to unwind, but the system is often the same. The development proposal of the arena fits that standard proposal mold for acquiring immediate action or else the project will be moved to another town. Developers label those residents who dare to question the project "NIMBY obstructionist, opposed to change," while the developers claim a silent majority of residents do want the development. I would counter that the majority of Philadelphia's residents' opinions are captured through proactive community engagement planning already conducted by the city's award-winning multi-year Philadelphia 2035 Plan. That comprehensive planning effort documents agreed-upon long-term vision for the city created through extensive public input with residents and allows independent elected officials such as you to fulfill a community vision for the city. Philadelphia 2035, particularly the Central District Plan, calls for development in exact contradiction to the proposal with a focus on restoring pedestrian connections, reintroducing streets, encouraging appropriately scaled urban infill development, introducing a variety of parcel sizes and frontages, restoring street walls and urban enclosures, encouraging street-level activity and ground floor uses, and focusing on places instead of project-based redevelopment. So I call on city council to serve as the voice of Philadelphia's residents that have called for redevelopment of Market Street that's very much different than that proposed by the developers. Thank you.
Please state your name for the record and please begin your testimony.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Emilio Weber. I'm a District 5 resident. Thank you for being here and listening to all of our comments. I'm sure you'll hear some of the same things, but I hope you really do listen. My public comment is in opposition to the arena deal and associated bills. If you vote yes, you are choosing the side of billionaires against the will of the people here. Now, I know you have all been here for many hours, and we'll hear many of the same talking points, but really, listen. Take stock of who's in the room tonight. Take stock of the energy. This is about lives, not just jobs. If you vote yes, can you in good conscience ever say you again work for the people of Philadelphia? Be clear in your political advertisements and campaign speeches. And still, some of you look ready to ignore the voices of the majority of the city who are against this development. And at large, councilmembers, don't forget your vote when election time comes up again. I know we won't. Developing downtown arenas are not the boon for development that people claim they are. You've heard economics experts and researchers come in and testify on the false promises of downtown stadium developments. As a graduate student in urban studies, I learned about the toll stadiums take on those same downtowns. The No Arena and Chinatown Solidarity Group has thoroughly researched the impact studies, legislation, and reporting on this agreement. Make no mistake, it's a bad deal for the City of Philadelphia as a whole. 76 DevCo is evading hundreds of millions of dollars in taxes. I know some of you members are making sense of some of the facts, and I thank you for that. Thank you to my councilmember Young for standing with the people on this issue, and make sure to listen to some of those people at home in our district, too. Now, I know we want development, and we certainly want good jobs. I was a proud union member and union organizer to the building trades unions. It doesn't have to be this project. Labor needs to be the way forward to a better world for all of us. Let's work together and take down this billionaire class. The facts clearly indicating the terrible deal are only piling up. There's no saving this. Let's come together and find a better site in our city to give the 76ers their next home. There's time. SEPTA's report indicated that just the staggering burden that will be placed on them to the tune of $20 to $25 million annually, and that is with the agency at a fiscal cliff. The 76ers agreed to more meetings. Why haven't they agreed to more money if they want this to go through? Why did Mayor Parker not negotiate better? Why are you all okay to go along with it? It's irresponsible and reprehensible to vote for an arena with this deal. Vote against this deal, listen to the people of this city, and don't succumb to the dreams of billionaires. Thank you.
Would Jenny Chen, Ann Dixon, Callie Thomas, and Kareem Boyd please come forward? Again, that's Jenny Chen, Ann Dixon, Callie Thomas, and Kareem Boyd, please. You will each have two minutes to speak.
Hello. State your name for the record and please begin.
I am grateful for building trades. Building and repairing are major skills. We definitely need new buildings and houses to be built, and we need old buildings to be repaired. We do not need an arena in Chinatown. As a lifelong Democrat, I am so disillusioned with the party. Over the years, it has moved more and more to the right. As others share my disillusionment, Trump won because so many Dems didn't vote. In the last mayoral election, only 30% of eligible voters participated. The fact that this billionaire vanity project is being shoved down our throats by Democrats while our schools suffer is a punch in the gut. Thank you, councilmembers Kendra Brooks and Nicholas O'Rourke, for standing with the people of the city to oppose the arena. Thank you, councilmembers Jamie Gauthier, Rue Landau, Jeffrey Young, for questioning the process. I am grateful that they and Catherine Gilmore Richardson, Nina Amon, and Cindy Bass asked good questions in the hearings. There are so many questions that the impact study hasn't answered. Who will pay for needed extra police during game days? Where will tailgaters park? Who will pay for any needed changes to traffic lights? How will the arena affect traffic in Old City? How will it affect Vision Zero? How will a realtor be chosen to assess the properties that need to be bought out for the arena? Who knows? City Council, this project is so unpopular. No registered neighborhood organizations support it. I urge you to bravely band together and go against councilmanic prerogative and defeat this disaster.
Go ahead.
My name is Jenny Chen. I live in the 3rd Council District, and I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of Bill 240966. I want to ask you all to take a moment to imagine your favorite neighborhood, the place where you feel comfortable being yourself, where you and your family feel safe, where you feel proud of your culture, and where you can celebrate your traditions. For me, that neighborhood is Chinatown. Growing up, Chinatown was the one place in the entire Philadelphia region where my first-generation immigrant parents felt comfortable spending time, talking with people, and buying groceries and other basic supplies. Today, Chinatown is the primary reason I go to Center City. It's where I meet friends, celebrate holidays, and build community. In the future, I hope Chinatown can provide all these same important resources for my son, who is now a little over a year old and is here tonight. However, this proposed arena is an existential threat to Chinatown and the city more broadly. The city's own studies show that a majority of Chinatown businesses will be harmed, effectively destroying the key resources so many people rely on and potentially costing Philadelphia more than $1 billion in lost tax revenue. This disastrous project is being rushed through city council without a full understanding of its environmental impacts, public health effects, and true economic costs. I urge our leaders to take a step back and provide an opportunity for us as a city to conduct a true comprehensive planning process to determine how to address the challenges in Market East so that we can benefit all Philadelphians, not just a few out-of-town billionaires. I want to close by thanking my own District Councilmember Jamie Gauthier, as well as councilmembers O'Rourke, Brooks, Landau, and Young for standing with the majority of Philadelphians who oppose this project. I hope our other councilmembers find the empathy and courage to do the same. Thank you.
State your name for the record and begin.
Thank you. My name is Kareem Boyd, West Philadelphia, born and raised. Thank you to the City Council Committee of the Whole for allowing me to testify and allowing this community to testify during the 76ers Arena Legislation Process. My name is Kareem Boyd, and I serve as the Business Agent for the International Alliance of Theatrical Staging Employees, Philadelphia Local Aid. First, I want to express my gratitude for the thoughtful deliberation and integrity demonstrated by this committee. Your role in evaluating the potential impact of future developments despite the uncertainty they bring is not an easy task. Yet, like the successful committees before you, you face this challenge with sound judgment. As I left work today at the Pennsylvania Convention Center, I reflected on the committees that once decided to transform the old railroad terminal into what is now the Convention Center and Reading Terminal market. Could they have foreseen that in 2023, the project would generate $360 million economic dollars to impact the city, along with $18.5 million in local tax revenue and $20 million in state tax revenue? Could they have predicted that their decisions would sustain more than 187,000 hospitality-related jobs in our region? While I didn't have the privilege to thank them then, I feel obligated to do so now, recognizing the long-term benefits their foresight has delivered. Today, I speak not for myself, but for future generations of Philadelphians who stand to benefit from the gainful employment and entrepreneurial opportunities that this arena project could provide. Approving this legislation would integrate the 76ers Arena into the vibrant downtown life of Philadelphia, creating pathways for sustainable careers. The building trades unions are already recruiting. They're already training and shaping the workforce of tomorrow. The 76ers partnership with IATSE locally are helping to transition students into the hospitality industry. We are not mere shareholders. We are stakeholders invested in the future of this city. When addressing the valid concerns of this community, I urge the council to focus on the potential of positive impact over the fears of the unknown. This decision is not just about today, it's about creating a thriving Philadelphia for years to come. Thank you.
Please state your name for the record and please begin.
My name is Callie Thomas, and I am here in opposition to the development of the proposed arena and in support of the Chinatown community. I have been a resident of Philadelphia for four years and live in Brewery Town. I'm a grad student at Thomas Jefferson University pursuing a master's in couple and family therapy. I take SEPTA daily, which ultimately gets me to my destination. However, I am often frustrated by its inconsistent consistency, lack of communication, and outdatedness. I take the 48 bus to commute to school and get on at the Arch and 11th stop in Chinatown to head home. The construction of the arena would cause my commute to be unbearably slow due to gridlock, which would require me to take an indirect route instead. The proposed arena is going to add an immense amount of stress to a public transportation system that is underfunded and needs a large amount of resources to improve it. It is nonsensical that SEPTA is in a financial deficit and that the arena would add an unnecessary financial burden of $25 million. It is unclear how the arena is going to be funded, and it is inevitable that taxpayers will be paying for it. Instead of my taxes being used for a project that will benefit a few wealthy people, I would like my taxes to benefit the whole community and be utilized for improving public transportation, education, housing, social services, almost anything else other than this arena. As a mental health professional, it is important to acknowledge that the displacement of individuals and businesses in Chinatown will negatively impact people's mental health. Being displaced causes people to lose connections with their community and sends the message that the government does not care about them or value their contributions, which puts them at risk of depression and other mental health challenges. City Council, I am asking that you do your duty of serving the people of Philadelphia by not approving this arena. If not, you will be sending a message to the community that you are a leader who makes decisions based on your own interests and those of the wealthy. Thank you.
Well, Dylan O'Donohue, Brittany Whitley, Asantua Inkuma Torre, and Stephen Michael Buller, please come forward.
Again, Dylan O'Donohue, Brittany Whitley, Asantua Inkuma Torre, and Stephen Mike and Michael Buller, please come forward. You'll each have two minutes to speak.
Please state your name for the record and please begin.
All right. I am Brittany Whitley. I am a resident of Chinatown and a member of the queer community, and also I work as a teacher and take public transportation to work every day. I am currently, given the time I have tonight, I am currently going to speak on the issue of public transportation, even though the arena, if built, would impact many aspects of my life. Start, I would like to thank the councilmembers Brooks, O'Rourke, Young, Landau, and Gauthier for speaking out against this arena and how this process has been rushed and has ignored the will of the many, many Philadelphians who do not want this arena built. And speaking as somebody who takes the Broadridge spur to work every day, looking at the cuts that SEPTA is likely going to have to make come January, I am deeply concerned that my route to work is about to become a lot more inconvenient. And if this arena was to be built, the SEPTA simply would, I'm concerned that SEPTA would have to cut even more simply because they aren't going to have the money to provide the service needed to support the game, the games. the service needed to support the game, the games. And like SEPTA on their website today estimated the service for arenas going to cost them the additional $20 to $25 million per year. And with them already struggling, we do not have an answer as to where the money to pay for that extra service is going to come from. We don't think, we already heard that it's unlikely, like the 76ers owners aren't going to pay, it is unlikely the city will pay. So again, where is that money going to come from to avoid the downtown gridlock during games to prevent traffic from choking out neighborhoods like Chinatown, like the Gaborhood, and Jefferson Hospital? All right. Again, thank you again for inviting me and for allowing me to testify at this. And just please, I ask you again, please deeply consider all the unanswered questions, especially in light of the fiscal crisis that SEPTA is facing going into this upcoming year. Thank you.
Please state your name for the record and please begin your testimony.
I'm Stephen Michael Buller, resident of 2nd District. I was a former teacher in Philadelphia. Thank you for allowing us to do this tonight. This is the first time taking part in a public process like this, so this is kind of exciting. Sorry, I'm usually used to just talking without a mic, so this is weird to me. I'm usually in a gymnasium. But tonight, I'm here standing in opposition to the arena. As somebody that is not a natural-born citizen of Philadelphia, I'm from Lancaster County. I've seen how rural communities and working-class communities are impacted by corporations and billionaires, and I think we need to take it really serious consideration that this is a strong moment for us as a city to signal to the country that we're here to do something a little different. We're here for the working-class people. We want to do better for people, and I think that starts with this Council. So I would appreciate serious consideration, and thank you for this moment.
Reverend Nicholas, you better pray for me. All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Asantua Inkuma Torre. I'm an organizer with the Philadelphia Tenants Union, which is a member of the Save Chinatown Coalition. I am also an organizer with the Justice for Angel Davis Now campaign, also Black Philly for Chinatown, and the only pronoun I'm using this evening is co-conspirator with the people of Chinatown. Our beloved Chinatown has a proud history of over 150 years. Thus, we will organize and defend it every step of the way. From the brilliant minds of our research team, just want to share a few things with you. First of all, is this a sweetheart deal for the billionaires or any other supporters of this land grab? Why should these billionaires only pay $5 million per year in taxes to the city and school district, and then every 10 years, the amount would only increase by 10%? 76ers co-owner David Blitzer is Global Head of Tactical Opportunities for Blackstone, a private equity firm that is this country's largest landlord, owning 350,000 units of rental housing. Given our city's current housing crisis, please let's keep this in mind. Looking at Bill 240966, a measly $50 million is an insult to this city. And regarding community benefits agreements, who holds developers accountable if they try to sneak out of such agreements? These are some questions that we have. Now, some people have talked about priorities for the city. I think this arena should not be a priority, but instead, let's make a priority our public schools. Let's make them safer, and let's remove asbestos. Let's do that instead. As a priority, let's remember Angel Davis and Latise Batia, who were shot last year during an LTO eviction. They've been living on GoFundMe's for over a year and a half. Now the holidays are coming, and they have repeatedly applied for Social Security benefits, and they have been denied. Let's make them and their children a priority. With respect to SEPTA Transport Workers Union 234, District Council 33, and Smart Local 1594, let's make them a priority. Let's pay them a raise that keeps up with inflation. Let's lobby Harrisburg for fair funding, and let's make sure they get a minimum three-year contract. These and other things this city needs should be our priorities. Now, in closing, I just want to say, Reverend, pray for me. I'm very confident in the brilliant minds and courageous organizers we have as part of the Save Chinatown Coalition. Thus, I say humbly but unapologetically, this arena will not be built. You heard what I said? You heard what I said? This arena will not be built. We will defend Chinatown with our hearts, and like David against Goliath, we will strike a final blow and run these billionaires out of this city. And when this campaign is over, and that will be soon, when this campaign is over, we will have a victory party. We're going to have it at 10th and Arch Streets, and I'm going to be the DJ. And we're going to dance the night away to one of my favorite tunes from the 1970s. Na 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 na, na 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 na, hey hey, bye. Thank you.
Will William King, MD, Jeffrey Linden, Brian Wallace, and Kenny Chu, please come forward? Again, that's William King, MD, Jeffrey Linden, Brian Wallace, and Kenny Chu, please come forward. You will each have two minutes to speak.
My name is Jeff Linden. I'm an academic advisor and instructor at Temple University. I live in Philadelphia as District 1, and I'm here tonight as a concerned citizen to voice my opposition to the proposed 76ers Arena. I echo my neighbors' concerns about the existential threat it poses to Chinatown and the public health risk brought on by the increased congestion close to Jefferson Health. I feel like you're going to speak to that better than I am. But according to this impact study to avoid gridlock around this new arena, the 75% of fans that currently drive to games at Wells Fargo would need to drop to only 40% taking cars to this arena, requiring a massive increase in fans taking public transportation. You've already heard that SEPTA has said they couldn't afford the necessary increases in rail service. The billionaire owners could afford to pay for this, but they just don't want to. So presumably, this is another cost that will be passed along to us, either in the form of tax hikes, fare increases, or the very gridlock that we are seeking to prevent. This is evidently of little concern to the team owners who regularly fly to games in helicopters, but it is a concern to my neighbors, my colleagues, and my students, who make up your voters. Those are the people who are going to have to live in this arena's shadow, go to work in its shadow, and for those unlucky enough to be in an ambulance on a game day, it is not hyperbole to say that they may die in its shadow. And if this gets forced through against public sentiment, we will not rejoice at the revenue it brings in because we will not share in it. We will look at that number and learn the dollar amount at which our elected officials stop representing us and start representing someone else. I thank those of you who have been standing up for our interests, and I call on any Council members still uncertain to join them. Thank you for your time.
State your name for the record and please begin, sir.
Yeah, I'm Dr. Bill King. I'm a pediatrician here in the city of Philadelphia for the past 30 years. I have, I work in West Philadelphia. I've taken care of all the black babies in West Philadelphia. If I haven't taken care of you, that means you haven't come to West Philadelphia. I also have taken care of almost all the black babies that AlGaskins didn't take care of in Germantown. What I'm saying is...
Point of information. Councilman Jamie Gauthier, is this your pediatrician when you was a baby?
My kids are grown men.
Not yet. Janie, no, Janie Blackwell would tell you, yes, I am there. And Jamie, she's coming, she's coming to us. I'm here to warn the City Council. I'm a pediatrician. I talk to babies all day. And the fact is, every good or bad idea is simple. It can be explained simply. This is simply a bad idea, and there's one reason: gridlock. You can't fix the gridlock. It is a bad, bad problem. Getting over here took 25 minutes, just to drive on the Vine and try to come in, just to see what it would be like to drive on the Vine and come in during normal rush hour, which we do all the time, 25 minutes or so. It's a tough commute when you're going in and out of the city. This is a different problem. This is event gridlock. Now, when you're going to create event gridlock in the center of a city, that is probably the plan of a supervillain. I think this is potentially the plan of a supervillain. Why would someone take an arena from an area like South Philadelphia, where you have two bridges, three freeways, and four different ways of egress? And you have convenience for everybody, all the fans in the Delaware Valley, to play football, basketball, and any other sport. You can play hockey there, you can play, right? The only thing you don't play there is soccer, and that's down, that's along the freeway as well, along the riverfront. You know what's a great place to put an arena? Along a riverfront. You know what's a terrible place to put an arena? In the center of a city. You know who would do that? You know who would do that? Only a supervillain. And you know how much they would have to pay you to do something that terrible? A billion dollars. They would have to pay you a billion dollars to do something that stupid. Let me explain why. We have three trauma centers. We have Temple, that's north. Everything north of Gerard or so comes to Temple. Northeast, all the way out. Everything west, the Schuylkill in west, that's Penn Presbyterian. The only and third trauma center in the Delaware Valley is Jefferson. Jefferson is two to three blocks from 10th and Market. I know you're not going to put a giant 18,000-person expeller that throws 18,000 people out into the middle of the street and blocks traffic for two hours. Now, these people are not going to go to Chinatown and eat the delicious food because they just ate in the arena. But what they're going to do is be angry and mull around looking for their cars. There are 5,000 cars. Why would we want 5,000 more cars between Broad and my trauma center? This is a bad idea. The Vine, if you are, if we here are shot, which we will not be because the Sergeant of Arms is excellent, we're not going to be hurt here. But if we are, we will go to Jefferson. But what we don't need is for a Sixers game to let out if we're trying to go to Jefferson because that will take the five minutes lights and sirens and turn it into 25 minutes. It is exhausting, Jimmy Lowe will show you, that it is exhausting when you try to do CPR more than five minutes in the back of an ambulance. You can do it in the hospital. In the ambulance, after five minutes, we are fried. If you make it 25, people die. If we don't get there for their strokes, people die. If we can't get the tourniquets on, people die. We can do stuff on-site, we can do stuff in the hospital, we can't do stuff in the ambulance. And you are blocking the egress of my ambulance when my patients are trying to go from everywhere, from Gerard to the Walt Whitman, from river to river. Every single patient that needs to go anywhere has to go to Jefferson, and you are blocking the egress of my patients. This is unacceptable, and you have to change your mind about the gridlock you have now inevitably created for the city, and there's no good reason for it.
Please state your name for the record.
My name, my name is Kenny Chu. I'm a lifelong constituent of Mr. Squilla, but I'm now a student at Penn, so I'm a constituent of Ms. Gauthier. I was born and raised in Philadelphia Chinatown to two working-class immigrant parents. My mom pushed hot dim sum carts at Ocean Harbor Restaurant. My dad worked construction in Chinatown with other Chinese immigrants, and my grandmother worked at the Convention Center and the Eagles Games as an airmark employee. I grew up in Hingway Yun, a senior affordable housing complex built in Philadelphia Chinatown, right next to the Vine Street Expressway that cleared several blocks of Chinatown's businesses and housing. Before Hingway Yun was built, the Federal Bureau of Prisons proposed a 750-bed detention center in the footprint of what would become the affordable housing complex that I grew up in. I come here today to voice my opposition to 76th Place. If you're a District Council member that needs revitalization, specifically an arena next to a hospital, a fire station, and an ethnic working-class community, please ask the Sixers to build in your district and leave Chinatown alone. For years, Chinatown's youth have listened to paternalistic representatives tell us what is best for our community. It has not phased us from marching in the streets, speaking up at town halls, or calling our City Council members to oppose the arena. Council members, I hope you have heard us over these years. If you have children yourselves, they will see that the youth standing up to protect their communities will win with the power of the people or lose to billionaires who don't have to fight like we do. I may still be young, but I understand that dark money, lobbying, secret meetings, and political donations exist. I understand those are the reasons why billionaire owners have not felt the need to talk to our community once. Have the courage to govern for your constituents, not for human rights abusers. I'm not naive to corruption, but I hope that we will win. Our aunties, uncles, grandmas, grandpas, and our children, we never ask for anything. We keep our heads down, we work hard, hoping to pass down our earnings and our community of Chinatown to the next generation. We've taken one for Team Philadelphia. We've actually taken many. We've lost hundreds of homes and businesses through the Vine Street Expressway, Convention Center, commuter rail tunnel, and more. It's time for Team Philadelphia to take, to stand up for Chinatown.
My name is Brian Wallace, and I'm a lapsed museum curator in the city of Philadelphia and around the city, and now as an elementary school teacher. Couple of quick points. First, the rhetoric used to justify the dislocation this arena would cause reminds me of so-called urban renewal. Quite apart from the generally poor outcomes from that historical approach to maintaining the health of our cities, and yes, there are exceptions to this poor record, this part of the city doesn't need renewal, per se. It needs some subtle, nuanced, context-specific improvements, commercial and public, that are in keeping with the texture of this neighborhood and that represent realistic and also aspirational goals for its future. This neighborhood absolutely does not need a money-making physical structure with event-driven traffic rhythms that just happen to correspond with the profit motives of a small number of outsiders. My next point is best summarized, and I swear this is a coincidence, my best, my next point is best summarized by reference to the Hippocratic oath that has guided doctors for millennia: first, do no harm. In the arena case, instead of expensive treatments that turn out to benefit the hospital more than the patient, we have a corporate entity that can easily afford the tax giveaways and other so-called "community benefits" meant to act like bandages and painkillers for this deal. this deal. Does anybody here really think these represent a true sacrifice? I can imagine a city planner ten years from now emerging from a meeting about the future of some future Chinatown badly harmed by this project, looking like a downcast doctor with bloodied gloves and saying, "We did everything we could, but ultimately, we had to kill the neighborhood in order to save it." Final point. Somehow, someone at some point has decided that tourists visiting Philadelphia are gonna walk all the way from Old City to Center City, well, and back, and that Chinatown is the only impediment to this otherwise blissful and history-steeped stroll. Solution: more retail. Let's shop our way all the way from seventeen-oh-four to twenty-sixteen. That's Alfred's Alley to OG Love Park, right? This is the contemptuous vision the arena developers have created on our behalf, but it's really on their own behalf, or on behalf of their property holdings and their branding exercises and their nested financial entities. Let's get real. A slab-sided arena chopping two-thirds of two blocks off of Chinatown won't help tourists or any of the rest of us ignore all the parking lots like missing teeth in this part of the city. These lots, while admittedly convenient for the future sports fan, are profoundly off-putting to the pedestrian, then are essentially generational wealth set to tip the scales on the next big property development debate, right? And neither retail nor an arena will afford the working people, right there. And neither retail nor an arena will afford the working people of this city any significant pleasure or relief from their toil. Unless they're working low-wage jobs with no health care, they'll forever be on the outside looking in. And one more point, just because the doctor got an awful lot of time, I'm gonna just stick my oar in on his behalf. When I worked at Moore College, I had an epileptic seizure and was whisked at high speed in the ambulance through the city streets, as I thought about it, right across the property that we're now talking to to get to the hospital. So you can keep me in mind as well when you make your vote. Thank you.
Tommy Li, Lily Kavanaugh, Carla Stein, and Sam Sam, please come forward. Again, Tommy Li, Lily Kavanaugh, Carla Stein, and Sam Sam, please come forward. You will each have two minutes to speak. Thank you.
Please state your name for the record and proceed.
My name is Tommy Lee. I go to Roman Catholic High School as a senior, and Chinatown has always felt like a second home to me. Growing up, I've been deeply shaped by the vibrant community, traditions, and people here. It's where I've learned about my culture, found lifelong friendships, and developed a strong sense of belonging. I'm a youth basketball player and line dancer with the Philadelphia Suns, a community organization that's been a cornerstone in Chinatown for decades through this, decades. Through the Suns, I have many privileges of performing line dances during Lunar New Year, which is one of my favorite times of the year. The streets of Chinatown come alive with the sounds of drums, the crackle of firecrackers, and the brilliant colors of the line dance. It's a time of joy, unity, and celebration, a perfect reflection of what Chinatown means to so many of us. The Suns, led by Harry Leong, have been more than just a team to me. They've been a family, teaching me the values of hard work, teamwork, and cultural pride. Through basketball and line dance, I've learned to embrace my identity and contribute to preserving the rich history of Chinatown. This is why I'm strongly opposed to the proposed arena. Chinatown is more than just a place, it's a home, a cultural hub, and a safe place, a safe place for families like mine and many others. An arena would disrupt everything that makes this community special. It threatens the small businesses, the traditions, and the sense of belonging that Chinatown provides. For me and so many others, Chinatown is irreplaceable, and we must protect it for future generations. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lily Kavanaugh. I'm a third-grade teacher at Fax Charter School in Chinatown. I'm, I'm nervous in front of a microphone, but I'm imagining all fifty-six of my third graders standing behind me. My triplet kindergarten students also attend Fax Charter School, and they love school. Every day, they come home telling me great stories about all of their teachers and all their classmates. Last night, I saw Angela Davis speak, and she said something that's been sitting with me really deeply. She spoke about the necessity of revolutionary patience. She spoke about how it takes a long time to build the world that you want to see in your community. Two weeks ago, I attended a meeting with my council member, Councilman Gaultier, at Sarah Rec Center, where we're talking, there she was talking about finally having funding to open up the, one of the, I think, three indoor city pools that's been closed for almost ten years. And I feel like that is an example of revolutionary patience. Our community has been waiting almost a decade to get this pool reopened that has shaped the community. So many people at this meeting were talking about, like, how important this pool was and this rec center is to their community, and that is the example of things that we need to have in our city: more indoor pools, more rec centers, more avenues for our community to be stronger. I asked my students, instead of choice time, if they would like to send a message to city council. And these are all of the postcards that they sent, and I have picked a few to read. So, here we go, from third graders. They want to speak to you. Even though I cannot vote, Chinatown is my home. She lives on Arch Street. And you are not going to take it away from me because a good mayor listens to the citizens, big or small, and I am small, but I can say, no arena in the heart of our city. No arena in Chinatown because I need education, I need school. I do not want the arena because I do not want businesses to close here. People live here, people eat here, and people learn here. No arena in Chinatown. I do not want an arena in Chinatown because the school is in Chinatown and I learn there. No arena in Chinatown, please. This is not what we need. We need homes and food, please. I don't want the arena because Chinatown means a lot to me. My grandma and grandpa live in Chinatown, so I don't want them to move away. And one more last thing, when it is hot, I love to go to Mr. Wish and get a nice cold drink. Don't build the arena in Chinatown. People care about Chinatown. They live in Chinatown. People will be sad because Chinatown is the only place that feels like home, and it keeps getting smaller. Why can't the Seventy-Sixters just take the land that was offered to them, or they can't stay where they are? At least the Flyers shares the space with them so you don't have to go around knocking down precious buildings. I don't want the arena in Chinatown because my mom and many other people work very hard to earn money there and be successful. If the arena is built there, many people and my mom might lose their jobs and might not be successful. If you want Philadelphia to be strong, you should not build an arena in Chinatown. If the arena is built in Chinatown, it will not feel the same. I don't want the Seventy-Sixters because Chinatown is special to me.
Please summarize your testimony, but I would ask if you could share the 355 cards with the Sergeant at Arms for dissemination for members of council to read.
Okay, I have four, four more highlights. Really, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
People need their beauty sleep, and it will be loud. You shouldn't let them build because everyone in our classroom loves the fashion district, and you don't have to make it in Philly, like, PA isn't the only place in the world. Make our world a better place, please. Okay.
Hi, my name is Carla Stein, and I live in Councilman Squilla's district. I also am a tour guide, and over the last few months, I've spoken to a number of tour guides who provide tours around the city. I have not found any who are in favor of the arena. Here are a few specific concerns we have. First, there is a natural corridor between the Historic District and the Philadelphia Museum of Art. A number of sites sit along this route, including Chinatown and Reading Terminal Market. Tour buses, tourists using public transportation, tourists paying for rides, as well as pedestrian tourists, will all struggle to navigate around the construction area during the six-year construction phase and later during games and other events at the arena. Reading Terminal Market gets seventeen-thousand visitors every single day. In 2026, we will be celebrating the 250th anniversary of the Declaration of Independence. Philadelphia that year will also be host to six World Cup Games. According to Mary Ann Ruin, president of the Association of Philadelphia Tour Guides, ninety-nine percent of World Cup travelers return to the host city if they've had a good experience. Philadelphia expects to host over half a million visitors for the six Games at Lincoln Financial Field. The matches are expected to have an economic impact of over $500 million on the area, including $262 million in direct spending. Each match is expected to generate around 26,000 hotel bookings. That is a lot of potential for future visits if the World Cup guests are not subjected to impossible traffic congestion, public transportation delays, and unsightly construction in progress. Second, you've heard from Philadelphians and those in Chinatown, but what about the broader impact on how Philly will be perceived by the 26 million visitors who visit Philadelphia every year? Recently, there was one German tourist whose perception was that the city is racist when he discovered that an ethnic enclave would be destroyed, one that is an essential aspect of Philadelphia's cultural landscape. This proposal has pushed Chinatown onto the National Trust of Historic Preservation's list of 11 most endangered historic places in America. Would you be willing to destroy the core identity of the Italian market, Rittenhouse Square, or Old City? These areas, these areas like Chinatown make Philadelphia unique. Stop to think what we'd be missing if I-95 had successfully erased Alfred's Alley, or if Independence Hall had been demolished, as it almost was in 1812. Ensuring a smooth, hassle-free visit to Philadelphia is going to guarantee Philadelphia economic benefits for years and years to come, not only from the World Cup fans revisiting, but also from other events choosing Philadelphia as their go-to hub. It's absolutely crucial to keep the Historic District and tourist corridor to Center City clean, safe, and green through 2026. An arena elsewhere in the city is a win for everyone.
Hi, all councilmen. My name's Sam Sam. I'm the resident of Chinatown, over forty years, and work in Chinatown. Yesterday, it, the first time in my life, somebody died in front of me, my car accident on 10 and Spring Street, right? It's a very, very bad feeling. I feel bad for him till now. Like, I think the safety, for communal safety, I think our lack of office pays more attention to neighborhood, safety, living, not for the billionaire. First thing, I give my background here, okay? I'm come from, I'm refugee from Vietnam. I've been born and raised in Vietnam during the war time. We got no lifetime, no nothing, no childhood time, no, uh, right? In 1968, my home burned down because the war coming in. Body laying around all, all of my neighborhood. So I escaped my country, 1979, come to this country. Why I choose this country? Because I thought it's Democrat's country, and with freedom of speech, that's why I choose to come to the country. And now, why Chinatown's so important to me? It's my home here. I never have home since I was ten years old. Everyone around the war time, that's why. Right? Now you try to build arena in my town here, will destroy a town, a community. Chinatown can be replaced, never get be replaced. The billionaire can make some money somewhere else, not in Chinatown. The billionaire not gonna die without Chinatown, building Chinatown. Our community destroyed, okay? All right? The site is not, I again, the site, not the arena. The city can still have taxi, they build somewhere. How about the dirty station over there, the Amtrak station, a lot of wide-open spot there? All right? That's my suggestion. Another suggestion here, all right? I'm still here, a Philadelphian, for a long time. My daughter born in here. I hope my coaches will all love forever in Chinatown, okay? And here, my other thing here, okay? Why we spend all the time we need to debate for billionaire? Why don't we all spend time for attending to the community, to the neighborhood, for safety and living, good living, okay? I back you here, I back all you elect officer and mayor, and let put in the ballot. Don't vote for now, put in the ballot, put the palm of your ballot. Let people make a decision. Let the Democrat rise, okay? Let people make a, make a voice, make a decision, okay? Thank you.
Will Helene Burchak, Mercedes Benia, Katie DeSanto, and Sharon Tyson please come forward? Again, Helene Barchak, Mercedes Benia, Katie DeSanto, and Sharon Tyson please come forward. You will each have two minutes to speak.
Hello, my name is Helene Barchak. I moved here thirty-five years ago from a fairly small town, basically white. I really enjoyed the inclusiveness of Philadelphia, how everyone is made welcome. I work in West Philadelphia. I'm a working-class person. I work in a bookstore, a used bookstore. Everybody up there, you know, we have Asians, black people, any, anybody you could think of, trans people, whatever, everyone's included. And I always thought about Philadelphia this way. It's a, it's, it's a city, but it's a small town. I always felt at, at home here. I've lived all over the city, and I'm appalled by this. I, I, I feel it's mostly like this, the Chinatown people are being discriminated, and, and also, it verges on the gayborhood too, the LGBTQ people. They are also impacted on, about, with this, and it's two people that are very vulnerable. They have no say. I mean, you notice they're not, they're not putting the stadium over in Rittenhouse Square. No, it's, it's there. And also, I, I also use SEPTA my whole life. I've traveled on SEPTA, and just the inconvenience this summer when they were doing something on Chestnut and Walnut, it took forever for the buses to get through, and I can't even imagine what it's gonna be like with this, this horror show, with the, with the building of the arena, and the hospital, too. The hospital, people are going to die. And the communities destroyed, people's homes, people's lives, people's livelihoods, all for the sake of greed. It's, it's just like what's happened in Washington, and it makes me sick. Thank you.
Is it my turn? Ready? All right. My name's Kate.
by the Peanut Gallery of building people who were here yesterday, and the fact that they are not here, I guess shows how weak their dog is in this fight, and all of us anti-Arena people are here showing up to speak our minds. But that's okay. I'll, I'll, I'll be back, I'll get them next time. But, so, I work at an art and cultural institution that's been in Chinatown since 1952. I think that most of the people in this room today weren't even alive in 1952. One person who was alive in 1952 was my dad, and he's watching this on the livestream, so, hi Dad. We are a one-of-a-kind artistic hub for the city, and after 72 years, we're one of the hundreds of locally-owned and independently-operated small businesses that the city's own studies project would not survive, six years of arena construction. Can you look me in my face today and tell me it's worth bulldozing and choking out my job and the jobs of my neighbors? Jobs that don't just support families, but also support the irreplaceable fabric of our shared culture and heritage? Just to, what, give a few temporary jobs to other people, jobs that can be done somewhere else? You would steal from Peter to pay Paul? To be clear, I am also completely 100% pro-union, and I believe that the path to prosperity is through blue-collar jobs, like the blue-collar jobs that I and my neighbors already have. I don't think I mentioned, I, I work at 9th and Arch Street, so I walk by the arena site every single day. And it's not only my job, it's the job of the people who work in the Fashion District and the people that I see walking back and forth every single day in this supposedly desolate Chinatown that was mentioned yesterday. The greatest cities in the world are built brick by brick by the people who live in those cities and who believe in those cities. Not once in human history has given, has been, excuse me, never, once in the human history has letting a cabal of outside billionaires running roughshod over your constituents and colonizing city land for their own private club that most of us couldn't even afford to get into ever resulted in anything other than the evisceration of spirit and the slow death of what a great city once was. It certainly won't provide the revitalization that they're claiming it will. Market East does need help, and we know this, but a redundant arena on a rush and confusing timeline with incomplete facts and data is the antithesis of what any of us need. That would move us backwards. Where is the city investment in the people who already live and work in Chinatown and Center City? Where is our $400 million tax break? We, the people, the unions and city councils, should be working together to build a Philly by us and for us. 76 DevCor, these shysty snake oil salesmen with shiny dollar bills have come in and pelted us with false promises, lies, threats, and misdirection, convincing one neighbor to push out another in pursuit of a quick dollar. This is not who we are as a city. For two years, council, you have received tens of thousands of voices of protest, phone calls, handwritten postcards, marches in the rain. Okay, I will. I'm almost done, but also two people didn't show up in my group, so I got a second. Yeah. You've also seen me and many of my cohorts in your offices, speaking with your staff, and you will see us again. How are you not ashamed, council members, that despite hundreds of experts in dozens of fields telling you that this is a bad idea, your constituents have had to come before you in these chambers, telling personal stories about traumatic birth experiences and chronic illnesses, as we heard about yesterday, to finally get you to understand what's at stake? What is stopping you from learning from the past mistakes of the city and dropping your support for this bill? We know you're only human.
Ma'am, please conclude your testimony.
I am. I'm on the, like, the last two lines. I just want to let you know that we can forgive you for backing this proposal before you knew the facts, for your profound lapses in judgment up to this point, maybe being swayed by previous allegiances before you saw the full picture, and we could even respect you for admitting that you've finally seen the light. But what we cannot forgive you for is ignoring us. And if you do not land on the right side of history by voting down this proposal, the city and its citizens will certainly never forget. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. As a reminder, we want to be respectful of all of the witnesses that we have on the witness list this evening, so we are asking that you please respect the other public commentators who have come here this evening, and please summarize your testimony. Thank you very much.
Would Ken Avalon, Lillian Austin, Sam Low, and Keith Baldwin please come forward? Ken Avalon, Lillian Austin, Sim Low, Keith Baldwin, please come forward. You will each have two minutes to speak. Well, would Adam Shellhorse please come forward?
Yeah, I'm Ken Avalon.
Please begin your testimony.
Thank you. I'm a very different representative here. I'm from suburbs. I can't vote for any of you, unfortunately, but I work in the city, I've been working in the city forever, pay a lot of taxes here, spend a lot of money here, spend a lot of time in town, and we love coming, coming into town. We love going to sporting events. From where I live, to get to South Philly, we take, we take SEPTA all the time. It's, it's about an hour for us to get there. And we just, we don't, we don't go a lot. We go to afternoon games. Evening games are just harder. It takes me an hour to get home. If there's an event here in town, like, it's 25 minutes for me to get home. So it's the type of thing where if there's, there's a sporting event in town, if there's a, a concert in town, us from the suburbs, it's much more convenient for us to come, come into town. I hear a lot of talk about money. Obviously, there's money throughout all of this. There's 2 million, 2 million people who live in the suburbs. There's a lot of suburban dollars out there. A month ago, we were down here, a bunch of us, we met at our house, took, took SEPTA into town, went to a show, and we were walking through the, I still call it the gallery, I know it's not the gallery anymore, walking through the Fashion District. It's beautiful. It's, it's, it's inviting, and it was empty. There was nobody there. It's a gorgeous Saturday afternoon. I couldn't figure out why. You know, it was appealing, there's, there's, there's plenty of stores there. With this project, separate from the, the Sixers Arena itself and the Games, there's a lot of other amenities that are gonna be there. You, you see it all, it's all, it's all over the, you know, the different websites, but it's the type of thing where we would come into town. You know, we'd take that 25-minute ride, and we'd come in to a vibrant, you know, kind of an exciting destination, as opposed to, you know, you walk through, as I said, the Fashion District, and it's, it's, it's actually, it's disappointing. So I, I don't represent any group, you can, you know, look at me as the suburban guy, but there's, there's millions of us out there, we love spending our money in town, and something like this is a real draw to people from outside the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name for the record and begin with your testimony, please.
Hi, good evening. My name is Sim Low. I live in Councilman Squilla's district and working Council President Johnson's district. I'm a public policy specialist focused on early education and childcare. Prior to this, I spent 10 years supporting underprivileged children and families from across the city of Philadelphia as a family services coordinator and a home visitor. I'm here today because I'm deeply concerned about this, the devastating impact that this proposal could have, not just on childcare program, but on the working families who rely on them and our economy. And I ask you to vote no to this proposal. Within the immediate impact zones of this proposed arena, there are approximately 20 childcare programs serving nearly 1,700 children and family. Based on, to take into account of the scale of this project, like, expense five blocks each, in each directions, that will, that numbers rises to over 70 programs with capacity to serve more than 6,300 children and families. That is about 5% of our city's childcare capacity at risk. 69% of these programs have an agreement with the state to serve families using the childcare work subsidy. These are essential workers, like teachers, bus drivers, city employees, hospitality's worker, constructions workers, et cetera, earning less than 200% of the federal poverty income guideline annually, who rely on childcare as their lifeline to keep the city running. Construction, congestion, and business displacement, and resident displacement will pose immense challenges for this program to survive. Across the city of Philadelphia, we are in the midst of a childcare crisis. Our system is only serving 42% of eligible children under five, leaving 58% children unserved. This proposed arena will exacerbate this crisis. This is also an economic crisis waiting to be unfold. When parents can't work because there's no childcare, businesses lose their workforce, productivity drop, and our economy will suffer. In Pennsylvania alone, our economy is suffering a staggering $6.65 billion loss because of this crisis. This proposal will only deepen those losses. To those speaking about being brave for both opportunity, I agree. As an immigrant, as an educator of colors, I'm all for opportunities and job creations, and that's why I moved to, moved to this lens of opportunities called the United States of America. But being bold doesn't mean being reckless. I can't help but thinking some of the families who I work with who rely on the childcare in the area. Okay, I'm sorry. So let's ask ourselves, what's good is a high-paying job if parents can't find childcare to work? What good is an arena if traffic gridlock prevents access to trauma center? And what good is this so-called progress if it deplaces the very communities it meant to uplift? Real people who try to make it happen, make it work for the next generations, real future, your constituents' lifelines is at stake. For that, I ask you, our city council, the people's city council, to vote no. Thank you, and I welcome any questions about childcare. Thank you.
My name is Adam Joseph Shellhorse, Council District 1, and I am speaking on Resolution 240966. Esteemed council members, Mayor Parker, and fellow Philadelphians, Philadelphia is all about diversity. It's a brother and sisterhood of countless diverse peoples. Yet, the arena proposal in question this evening, introduced by Councilmember Squilla, is nothing less than shameful, betraying our city's great fraternal project. It is shameful, and it betrays the great fraternal project of this wonderful city. It presents, in effect, a short-sighted, racist, gentrifying existential threat to the Philadelphia Chinese community, to all Philadelphians, to all Philadelphians and all tourists who adore Philly, and to our beloved Chinatown. It is, moreover, a predatory land grab, nothing short of it. It will uproot the neighbors, the Philadelphia Chinese and Chinese-American community, and will cause gentrification, effectively destroying one of the most vibrant, culturally relevant, treasured areas in the city. And I would like to give props to my Temple colleague. I'm a professor at Temple University, and what he said about killing people because of this gridlock at Jefferson, we need to pay attention to that, because people are gonna die on the watch of this city, and it's gonna be a mess for six years in Center City, and I cannot denounce it strong enough, because I love Chinatown, I love my Chinese neighbors, and I am sick and tired of this kind of land-grabbing gentrification. You know, at Temple, they're always wanting to build a stadium, but the people push back. You know, they always push it back. But here we are, here we are, that, you know, the Chinese immigrants, you know, like, maybe they have some trouble with English. It's racist, it's shameful, and they've been trying to dump stuff on Chinatown forever. Chinatown is the magnificent, diverse home and cultural hub of over 3,000 residents and numerous shops and businesses, a national treasure. It has been under constant attack for decades, fighting back against baseball stadiums, casinos, and the like. My wife, friends, and colleagues, we all go to Chinatown all the time. We have spoken extensively with neighbors, and no one wants the arena there, no one in Chinatown. And the fact is, the 76ers, and this is a very important point, the Sixers won't stay there long, they will leave. Following, following national trends, hold it, I'm finishing, following national trends, as with the case of the Washington Wizards in Washington DC, the 76ers will want another stadium and move again. So much demolition, so much destruction, for such a short-sighted vision, and this is gonna lead to the destruction of an ethnically diverse community in the name of racist-driven profits. I'd like to quote a recent article from the Daily Pennsylvania. It exactly quotes what happened in Washington DC recently. The story of Philadelphia's Chinatown mirrors other Chinatowns across the nation.
Please conclude your testimony.
Okay. Well, I've, I've included this, let me finish here, okay? So again, what I wanted to say is that in DC, this happened, right? It devastated the DC China, you go to DC, and Chinatown is nonexistent. We love Chinatown, and you're gonna destroy it with this terrible proposal. You know, I wish these council members would stop looking at their cell phones and start paying attention to the people, because I'm telling you what, I'm getting pissed off about people uprooting my people, okay? I've got Chinese family, and this really, really pisses me off. So please, council members, do the right thing, save Chinatown for the people.
Well, Mary Stumpf, Peter Janisik, Jason Massey, and Reverend Dr. Sharon Avant, please come forward. Mary Stumpf, Peter Janisik, Jason Massey, Reverend Dr. Sharon Avant, please come forward. You will each have two minutes to speak.
Please state your name for the record and please begin your testimony.
Hello, my name is Mary Stumpf. The city council and council president, my name is Mary Stumpf, I live in District 1. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. The Sixers Arena proposal for Chinatown is the wrong choice for Market Street for many reasons. Firstly, why jeopardize the two assets that border this proposed development, that of Jefferson Hospital directly to the south and Chinatown directly to the north? These are valuable assets to the city. Anything that creates traffic gridlock and transportation delays for people trying to access Jefferson Hospital services is doing a disservice to this large tax-producing employer. Chinatown, which has been in existence since 1851, should be regarded and protected as the historic unique treasure it is. The ZBA wisely acknowledged that there are special zoning considerations that arenas, stadiums, ballparks, and other large entertainment venues bring to the community, and legislated the Stadium District zoned for this very purpose. It's exciting to be at the sports complex because of the vibe created by the Stadium District zoning. If one looks back at the two former proposals that were considered for Chinatown, the Live Casino and the Major League Baseball Stadium, both are doing phenomenally in the Stadium District. In 2021, Live Casino was named the best overall gaming resort in Pennsylvania, and that is because it is appropriately situated at the Stadium District. Citizens Bank Ballpark is an acclaimed gem with spectacular views of the city skyline because of its appropriate placement in the Stadium District. There is no need to spot-zone another entertainment district that Philadelphia taxpayers can ill-afford and do not need. As stewards of the public trust, council should listen to the voices of the majority of Philadelphians who do not want a Center City arena. Council should deny the arena from being shoehorned into the unforgiving colonial-era street grid of one-way Center City streets, and should encourage the Sixers to find their own unique niche in the Stadium District. That placement can allow it the space to be what it is, a now-and-then, car-centric, mega-entertainment venue specifically catered to fans coming to see a game. The mass transit infrastructure is in place and has been successfully tested for decades. Other valuable assets worthy of consideration are the trifecta of anchor institutions providing economic stability known as Eds, Meds, and Feds. Of these, I counted at least 16 federal agencies located just east of this proposed arena site, which council should factor in when making their decision. Again, I urge council to stop the rush to approve the arena, to do your due diligence, and stand with the hard-paying, the hard-working taxpayers of the city. We cannot afford this foolish gamble. Again, thank you for this opportunity to speak.
My name is Peter Janisik. I am a resident of the area. I'm a resident of the area where the stadium, the I'm a resident of the area where the stadium, this arena is supposed to be built. In my past life, I'm retired. I worked for the New York City Council Land Use Division, where I was the senior project manager, who, my projects included the new Yankee Stadium, Citi Field for the Mets, the minor league stadiums for the Yankees and the Mets, and also the United States Tennis Association, and I did a little work on Barclays also. I'm just going to specifically look at the traffic study on this thing. It's, to say the least, lacking. There is no way that the number of cars that are going to be coming in for this, considering like what it is already, is dealing with total gridlock, just like what the doctor had said before, you won't be able to move. And the amount of pollution that you're going to be pumping into the air will destroy anything that the Federal Clean Air Act has ever seen. So just under that alone, legally, you cannot approve this just based upon the traffic study, which is inadequate. And that's all I really have to say.
Please state your name for the record and please begin your testimony.
Reverend Dr. Sharon Avant. I am clergy person and committee person also. I sit here and strongly oppose to the Seventy-Sixers' place being built here in our Center City. We have City Hall at one end, our city of Philadelphia's seat of power, where our legislators work on our behalf. We have federal court at the other end, on the other side, and we have district court across the street. I am opposed to this huge sports arena structure being built in our Center City, in our seat of power. The development of this structure will be a hazard to our legislators, people living here, people visiting, or just walking through our Center City area. Traffic gridlock is already very challenging. I can't get to Will's Eye Hospital for an appointment without being stuck on Eighth Street just waiting to get through traffic. We can imagine what would happen if an ambulance was trying to get through, and that's today. It will be amazingly difficult to experience the negative impact that this structure will have on us if it should be built. Center City is already congested, and the impact will be negative. We also have Independence Hall, the birthplace of American democracy, Constitution Hall, the Liberty Bell, and Chinatown. But we have a rich history to protect. Presidential debates are held here. However, with this structure that will seat eighteen thousand five hundred people, let alone the concession space and thoroughfares, they may not find it feasible to come here for debates because of the lack of abilities to secure public health safety. And it will be a considerably excessive amount of time for them to sweep this building in the event of an emergency. These are other things that I think that we should think about. Law enforcement, ambulances, and other necessary manpower just trying to get through the building, they will not, to the building, they will not be able to get through the traffic to the buildings for necessary assistance. We have hospitals which ambulances may need to travel through on emergency basis to Will's Eye and Thomas Jefferson. Chinatown and other businesses will suffer tremendously. They may have closed, they may have to close because during development, these fencing and street closures will deter people from supporting these businesses. They think that $3 million is enough to give people something that they can't purchase, quality of life, dignity, financial security. Notwithstanding, the development's answer to not having parking to accommodate the arena is to ask city council to waive ordinances and to ask forty percent of the people to just not drive to the arena. This development hopes that these businesses don't survive because they will look forward to making an opportunity of their unfortunate circumstances and turn it into a cash cow for themselves. So I say that in closing, this arena should not be built in our downtown Center City. They must choose a different location, not in our seat of power, not in our Center City Business District, and not in the Chinatown community. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Please state your name for the record and please begin.
My name is Jason Massey, he/him. I live in Nice Town, if councilman and district. And if I named all of the groups I'm in, I would use all my time, so I'll be brief. This proposed arena is not just a building, it's a whole district being built. Things don't just happen in a vacuum. There will be new construction to go along with this project, and SEPTA is not going to expand service for this construction. So today's Chinatown will become tomorrow's parking lots because out-of-town Sixers ticket holders will demand it. This proposal demands a no. Speaking of real estate, the fact that this city has no plan for Market East beyond this arena is a serious issue. It makes it seem like the city is giving downtown to the billionaires. We should be using urban planning for corridors like Market East and all over Philly. We need plans for our neighborhoods and streets, and those plans need to say no to a Chinatown arena. I knocked on doors before the election in Council President Johnson's district, and residents in South Philly complained to me about the sorry state of West Snyder Avenue. Trash, loitering, drug use. I'm right between, you confused, right between Eighteenth and Twentieth. And we should be planning what businesses make sense in our neighborhoods. And shouldn't the neighbors be involved in that process? When I wanted to talk to folks in South Philly, I knocked on their doors. Our elected officials and out-of-town real estate robber barons should do the same. This proposal has been flowing around for two years, and the effort to engage with the almost seventy percent of Philadelphians against this project, about the $900 million tax breaks for this pipe dream, has been woefully inadequate. Caution: Voters that aren't engaged don't show up. I'm going to say it again. Voters that aren't engaged don't show up. November's election has showed us this. City council, vote no to this arena and also do more to get real, honest feedback from your constituents. Remember, your constituents vote for you, not for councilman prerogatives. Thank you.
Please state your name for the record and please begin.
Good evening, council members, and everyone spoke before me. Thank you for your speech. My name is Ying Chen Chen Shellhorse, Council District One, speaking on Resolution Number 240966. I'm a scientist, and I have lived in Philadelphia for nine years. I strongly oppose the proposal for Seventy-Sixers' arena in downtown Philly, near Chinatown. I love Chinatown and the community. It's beautiful. It's one of the best parts in the city. Building the arena there will destroy and displace the community. It's hurtful. It's hurtful to see Philadelphia Chinatown to share the same fate as D.C.-Chinatown. And I deeply share the same concerns on our public transportation system and the huge cost incurred on SEPTA. And on top of that, the heavy traffic in Center City caused by this arena will affect ambulance and fire truck. And this means supporting arena will, that means you are putting billionaires' interests over patients' lives. And fourth, I'm also concerned about public funding taken away from public school and other priorities in the city. And this is a proposal for, this is not a proposal for working-class people and ordinary residents in Philly. Instead, it's one for the billionaires and a bad idea. And I strongly urge you to vote against this disaster proposal and voting no to arena and saying yes to save Chinatown Philly. And don't let Philly's Chinatown become D.C.-Chinatown. Mark my words, the Seventy-Sixer will leave the site in less than twenty years, forever ruining it, and you will have destroyed a beautiful cultural hub and national treasure, not to mention jeopardized, if not decimated, the health and livelihood of countless people. Imagine the utter desolation and blandness of downtown Philly without Chinatown. Thank you.
Well, Joseph Piedey, Ronald Williams, Leila Barcheck, and Felicia Dutch, please come forward. Again, that's Joseph Piedey, Ronald Williams, Lea Barcheck, and Felicia Dutch, please come forward. You will each have two minutes to speak.
Please state your name for the record and please begin your testimony.
My name is Joe Piet. I'm a retired postal worker, and I'm still a NALC member. I live in Curtis Jones District. I want to speak on why union members should oppose the arena. I've walked picket lines to demand higher wages and benefits and workers' rights at the post office many times over the last thirty years when I worked for the post office. But I also joined picket lines when NFL, National Football League players, went on strike back in 1987. I joined picket lines with workers at the stadiums just a couple months ago for a fair contract. I not only joined picket line during the last SEPTA strike, I worked to build community support for transit workers' rights and benefits. When black and brown and women workers complained that construction crews at Temple University projects didn't look like the population of North Philly, I helped organize picket lines, petitions, and meetings with Temple demanding fair hiring. We didn't demonize the unions, we pressured Temple to require fair hiring standards and won an increase from nine percent to thirty-nine percent in "minority hiring" at Temple. But I cannot support the construction unions this time. Solidarity is not limited to only those beside you on the job. Solidarity means a common struggle of all workers against the rich and powerful. When the vast majority of workers in Chinatown oppose a project that threatens their community, worker solidarity requires the construction trades to question the Seventy-Sixers' project. When study after study points how sports arenas harm surrounding communities, construction trades should try to get the developers to locate their project in an area where it will do less harm. Construction workers will have jobs wherever the new arena is built. We live in a city, state, and country where billionaires have undue influence in government decisions. Workers' organizations have to sometimes make hard decisions for which side they're on, that of the billionaires or on the people's side. As a labor activist for over fifty years, I say solidarity requires us today to stand with the Chinatown community, not with the billionaires. If all our communities and workers' organizations acted together in solidarity, we could win. We could win affordable housing, mass transit, schools, and so much more that could provide many more jobs than this billionaire's boondoggle. No arena in the center of the city. Thank you.
State your name for the record and please begin.
Hi, my name is Lea Barchak. I am from District Four, Curtis Jones District, and I strongly oppose the arena. I have a very long list of reasons of why I oppose the arena. Many of them have been stated tonight, but just to go over, its construction would be a disruption to Philadelphia with six years of construction, and once the active games, concerts, and whatever else is going to happen, this is going to be such a disruption to the city of Philadelphia. It's going to be a huge traffic clog. This would be threatening the lives of those who are trying to get access to Jefferson Hospital, whether they're in an ambulance or anything. It would also threaten the lives of those who have made their home in Chinatown as well as work in the neighborhood. It's going to cost the city millions of dollars, as well as the taxpayers. And I really don't feel like paying for a billionaire's little side project once again. It would make SEPTA much more difficult to take than it already is. I was born in Philadelphia. I've lived here all twenty-five years of my life. I have a love-hate relationship with SEPTA. I am an avid taker of the nine. I have a cat that, well, I had a cat that was born on the nine, just to say that. I have such a love-hate with this. It is so difficult to get to work every day. I work at the University of Pennsylvania at the Perrelman School of Medicine. The arena will directly affect my commute and how difficult it is to get home. I already work more than eight hours a day. I am tired. And just to finish, I think that all the councilmen here that are going to be up for reelection soon should strongly consider opposing the arena if they wish to be elected again. Please look around the room. We have only had two people testify in favor of the arena tonight and fifty-something who are in opposition. It is the working class who gets you elected, not a billionaire.
Please state your name for the record and please begin.
Hi, everyone. My name is Felicia Duke. Nice to meet you. Going off script for a second, but in a time of such divisive nation right now, I'd love if we could start in a fashion I start my groups as an occupational therapist with a power clap. So this might take two tries, but if everyone, if you guys just rub your hands together, all right? And then we're going to count three, two, one, and all clap together because wherever you stand, we are all still one city, right? I know this is lame, but it's also very cool. All right, three, two, one. See, isn't that awesome? Yeah, okay. Let's get started. Now everyone's awake. All right, so as I said, my name is Felicia Duke. I am a resident within Philadelphia's District One. As a healthcare worker, efficient access to the healthcare system is vital to patient survival. Philadelphia has several incredible hospitals that shine in helping people of the community. And between foot traffic and vehicle traffic near the projected arena location, due to construction, then congestion before and after each game, it's reasonable to anticipate that accessing local healthcare will become more difficult. During the regular season that extends from October to April, on average, there's at least forty-one home games per team. And that means that there is a minimum of forty-one opportunities for challenges that are intense in accessing the healthcare system. As a supporter of Philadelphia's Chinatown, I can't imagine risking losing fifty percent of our businesses there that are community-based and well-loved. Can you imagine if the stadium was built in the Italian market and it affected sports fans from getting Angelo's pizza? Creating a wedge in Chinatown that was settled in 1871, twenty years even before the invention of basketball in 1891, would be devastating to this community. A community so well-loved and cherished not only by residents, but visitors from the city, the U.S., and even the world. And my last point, as a Philadelphia sports fan, there's a lot of joy in attending a game in South Philly. there's a lot of joy in attending a game in South Philly, home of the Phillies Flyers, Sixers, and Wings, plus the local venues if you can't catch the game live, all in the same place. And I remember I got a preseason ticket and the Sixers won at Wells Fargo Stadium. And then we walked across the street to Xfinity Live to watch the Phillies play in the playoffs, you know, trying to get to the World Series. And we won't talk about the rest of that. But so many fans that could support both teams in one area. It was incredible and special and not to mention convenient. So in these three identities, I believe a new stadium in Chinatown and Center City Philadelphia would not only risk residents' safety, but would also bring disruption and challenge instead of unity and joy. After all, sports are supposed to bring our city together and not bring it apart. Thank you.
Good evening, Council President Curtis Jones. I saw him two days ago in West Philadelphia on Parkside Avenue with the Arts. Jamie, thank you for seeing you again. She's, Jamie came to visit us in Upper Darby in April. I'm the commander of the Veterans of Foreign Wars Post at 5212 Race Street, Philadelphia. About three weeks ago, I went in South Philadelphia and saw what President Johnson's work had been done on the post at the Lincoln Post. And they totally revow, and that's a beautiful job he did on that site. We're fixing up our post in West Philadelphia so it can better accommodate community and meeting rooms as well as the kitchens and restrooms. In addition, in cooperation with the Community Education and Development Centers, a social service vocational training and community development corporation, we want to plan, construct, and maintain a veterans and first responders theme park memorial museum, sports and entertainment complex in Philadelphia. We're trying to lure the Sixers to build in the Naval Yard where we'll be placing our museum and our memorial. It would display memorials to the veterans and first responders who have risked their lives in serving the citizens of this nation in all of the foreign wars and domestic emergencies, from the Revolutionary to the Gulf Wars and urban and rural emergencies, including fires, pandemics, and riots. It would also detail the history sacrifices and tributes to the veterans, police, fire, emergency workers, and teachers who risked their lives keeping the peace while educating and protecting and serving our communities. This complex would include conference centers, sports venues, shops, restaurants, and banquet facilities. These facilities could be leased or rented with proceeds going to the scholarship building and maintenance funds. We will also offer engraved bricks and plaques to be displayed along with the individual stories, units, and service of deceased or living heroes. We will be contacting the Disney Entertainment Corporation, which I did today, the Seventy Sixers, and Live Nation, who does so many sporting events and concerts, and the major sports teams. We're going to contact the major sports teams to get them to build a dome stadium. So we could have, so we can, when 2026 comes, Philadelphia can be the highlight. It can be a showcase of the world to celebrate the 250th anniversary of democracy and everything which started right here. And we'll bring everybody from the world. And it would be a great asset to have a basketball venue, concert venues, right in that area. It's in South Philly. I was born in South Philly, in the shipyard homes, and South Philly was always home for me. So this is the last pitch. The veterans and first responders we are honoring and serving by the reconstruction of this museum. When faced with national and domestic challenges, did not step out, drop out, call out, fall out, call out, or roll out, ease out or opt out. They put out and risked their lives and continually risked their lives for the people of Philadelphia. And we hopefully, we can find an alternative spot. An alternative spot. We can still keep the team in Philadelphia, but it'd be in South Philadelphia. And all the bells and whistles and everybody can join in, and we'd be happy there, other than Chinatown.
Well, Yvette Young, Sam Rice, Pat Sanford, Brendan Maddox, and Isa Shahid, please come forward. Again, Yvette Young, Sam Rice, Pat Sanford, Brendan Maddox, and Isa Shahid, please come forward. You will each have two minutes to speak. Ma'am, please state your name for the record and begin with your testimony.
Good evening. My name is.
Hi, good evening, esteemed Council President and beloved Council members. My name is Pat Sanford. I'm the president and CEO of Alexander Perry, Inc., a proud Philadelphia-based business. I've been in business for 32 years. I have seen a lot in Philadelphia. I'm deeply invested in this city. I grew up here. I attended schools here, including Allen Lock Elementary, where I began my education in kindergarten. And I built my career here as an architectural designer. I actually was privileged to be able to go back to Allen Lock as a construction manager and put in new heating, cooling, and ventilation for the Philadelphia School District for eight schools there. My firm and I have had the privilege of working on meaningful projects for the Philadelphia School District, contributing to the growth of our local community. Building a billion-dollar arena in Center City, I am in full support of. In addition to leading Alexander Perry, Inc., I also serve as member of Chambers of Commerce, African-American Chamber of Commerce, WeBank, Women of Color, Elevating Women. And I was a big contributor of the mayor's office of ADA, Mayor Kenny. And I served under Mayor Street and Mayor Nutter in a capacity as an art commissioner. So I have seen a lot of projects come into the city. I've seen developers come in and build. Now we can build buildings bigger than City Hall. I am here today to express my strong support for the proposed Philadelphia Seventy Sixers basketball arena. I did have a lot more to say, and if there were time, if there's still time, I'll say it. But what I really want to enforce is that Philadelphia has been known as a high-poverty city. And I, for 32 years, am tired of hearing that. And I really believe that this arena will make a difference. We can still have the arena, still have our neighbors in Chinatown. And I support all the bills that the council and the mayor has approved at this time. Thank you.
Please state your name.
Good evening. My name is Yvette Young. The city has surrendered the revenue streams that funded our city, like Veteran Stadium, which through events and concerts used to bring hundreds of millions of dollars to our city coffers. The contract with Lincoln Financial Field made Jeffrey Lory a billionaire within a few years instead of funding our neighborhoods. Please do not surrender to the American oligarchs like Jeffrey Yass, Jeffrey Lory, Josh Harris, and the like. Sacrificing the health and welfare of Philadelphia neighborhoods and the people that make up those communities is just not right. Leon Sullivan, Melvin Floyd, Cecil B. Moore, and others showed us how to get our children out of the cycle of violence and trauma that they are trapped in. But instead of putting in the work, our elected officials too often cave into the lobbyists and special interests. How in good conscience can you prioritize the destruction of a neighborhood and the newly constructed gallery to relocate a sports stadium instead of prioritizing schools, which have lead and asbestos, and eliminating food deserts? We've already lost Skybox Parking and Event Revenue from Veteran Stadium being lost. We lost our parking authority money. No other municipality in the state gives their parking revenue money away. And sadly, many Pennsylvania state representatives are biting the hand of this beautiful historic city that generates revenue for all 67 counties. When will you prioritize renovating and building new schools? When will you prioritize getting asbestos out of our schools? When will you prioritize getting lead pipes out of our schools and our homes? When will you prioritize testing our children for lead poisoning to ensure bad behavior is not coming from being poisoned by the very schools that they are attending? When will you prioritize solving murders in Philadelphia? Our murder clearance or solve rate has dropped significantly, leaving a minority of criminals to terrorize the majority. Will it be for the people, by the people? Or will it be the sole decision of the mayor and city council? The answer lies in your actions. Please listen to your constituents. Thank you.
Please state your name for the record and please begin.
My name is Samantha Rice. I'm a constituent of Jamie Gaudier's. I'm an arts professional and according to some, a professional agitator, but I've never seen a chick. And as we're talking about closing schools and as we're talking about SEPTA failing and 14,000 laborers striking in Philadelphia, you know that nothing on paper in this deal makes sense for anybody in this room or anyone outside this room. Chinatown is the beating heart of Market East. Its cadence guides the steps of an intergenerational coalition that puts the champions of Seventy Six Place to shame. They literally can't show their faces in this room. But you cannot revive or resuscitate any arterial area without the inevitable living organism that keeps it alive. When plan after plan delivered by rich men interested in extracting our resources have eaten communities alive, Chinatown has only ever fed Philadelphia, holding so many more communities than their own. This type of large-scale predatory development is a trend by billionaires to eviscerate vulnerable communities. They're planning many moves ahead for the inevitable erasure and displacement that Seventy Six Place will bring, to make it a playground for bored suburbanites like the only one of two people who testified tonight in favor, including the seven and 77-year-olds who has testified tonight. They want to step over their literal bodies in pursuit of our resources promised to billionaires behind closed doors. And that's only if the Sixers win, and it's only if they stay. No one is more fickle than a dissatisfied billionaire, except for maybe that bored suburbanite. And we all know where this ends up. My neighbors, my students, my peers, and my kin are sick to death of the city's elected officials wooing wealth into the city that betrays us time and time again rather than letting us guide the conversations and decisions that will shape our future. I grieve for the hard-working people of Philadelphia, like this person who just testified, who have been duped into thinking that this deal has any semblance of long vision, let alone vested interest. The insults and egregious violence of suggesting that the kind of jobs that will come from not only building the stadium but continuing to keep it going, inconstant labor, seasonal labor, that benefits our community is laughable. We in this room, here for Chinatown, are also here for labor. We're also here for black Philly, and the mayors and the billionaires. And anyone who would manipulate black labor against Chinatown organizers do so at their own risk. Black Power and Yellow Peril United will never be defeated. SEPTA can't afford it, the school district can't afford it, Chinatown can't afford it, black labor in Philly can't afford it. And I have stood shoulder to shoulder with elders who have many more years behind them than ahead of them, whose commitment to the protection of Chinatown is not for their personal enrichment, far from it. I'm going to finish up, and I appreciate that so much. I'm reclaiming my time for all the black people who have been silenced in spaces like this. They lend, our elders lend their wisdom, their experience, their profound love, their energy, and their capacity to a coalition that outlasts them. And I'm asking our council members to do the same. That is the floor, not the ceiling. The longevity of our city is bound to our ability collectively and your ability right now to imagine, implement, and protect a city that prioritizes its most vulnerable citizens, again, from age seven to 77, and all of our needs. So please build with us, not over us, right? Follow Chinatown's lead into the future, because if you do not, you will regret it. And we will not forget. Thanks for giving me my time. I appreciate you.
Please state your name for the record and you can begin.
Brendan Maddox, resident of the First District. I've resided at 9 North 9th Street for the last year, and I intend to do so for many years to come. I'm also the proud descendant of immigrants whose first home was Philadelphia. You've already heard a lot of terrific testimony this evening about the systemic impacts that this project is going to have. I am joining these voices in opposing the arena project and the transaction ordinance. I live one block east of the proposed arena site. I have followed the project since I moved to the neighborhood, and I found the impact study concerningly vague. The report indicates that any failure to meet the 40% baseline for public transit ridership to Sixers games will result in gridlock at critical intersections. SEPTA indicated this week that meeting that baseline will be impossible. The redesign of Jefferson Station will be extremely difficult and likely fail to yield the results required to digest an arena-sized crowd, making it more likely that that gridlock's going to occur. I have selfish reasons for coming tonight. My building butts the 800 block of Filbert Street, which is a proposed ride-share zone under the plan. The front of our building is an open parking lot where myself and many of the other tenants park our cars. On a regular basis, we already have to deal with break-ins, non-residents parking in the lot, jamming up space, and passersby urinating between the cars. This is just without a couple hundred drunk irritated fans arguing over who took whose Uber. For the peace of residents at 9 North 9th Street and the peace of residents in all of Chinatown and the neighborhood as well as the health of the Chinese-American and immigrant communities in Chinatown, I ask you to oppose this bill. Thank you.
Please state your name for the record and please begin.
My name is Mercedes Mania. Good evening to all members of council. There have been community leaders, residents, and businesses of Chinatown and vicinity that are opposing the proposed community benefits agreement. A community benefits agreement must be negotiated with the impacted community. The proposed CBA has not fully included the concerns of majority of the residents, businesses, and civic associations whose lives and livelihoods will be directly impacted for a lifetime. Not a moment, not decades, but a lifetime. The inclusion from this process is unacceptable. The proposed CBA fails to address the following core issues. Less than 10% of the $50 million within the CBA will go toward Chinatown despite it being the most impacted community. This money is less than half of 1% of the value of the project, an amount that is inadequate for the anticipated rise in rent and housing costs, small business displacement, and job losses, traffic and construction nightmares, and impact on Chinatown's basic livelihood. No money is allocated for housing and rent relief, and no money for housing and rent relief is directed towards Chinatown and impacted businesses in the area effectively. A community impact study reported that more than half of the 600 businesses in Chinatown would suffer as a result of the arena. Only 1.6 million is allocated for small business impacted during construction. That math works out to 37 per month in assistance per business during six years of construction nightmares. The CBA allocates $3 million in a lending program that is proposed to start in 2032. This amounts to 166 per business year. Most of the funds won't start for years in proposed protections for Chinatown or any other neighborhood if the Sixers fail to live up to their agreement or turn out to be poor managers of the project. The mayor's administration refused. The mayor's administration refused multiple requests for meetings throughout 2024 calendar year, failing to provide basic updates for concerned Chinatown residents and community leaders that have asked the administrator in writing. Community residents of impacted areas deserve a fair and inclusive process. Ask council to respect your city and respect the majority of the community that will be impacted the most.
Please state your name for the record.
My name is Taylor Tai, and I'm a teacher in Northwest Philly, and I oppose the arena. I want to start with just two points of information because I feel the arena was deeply misrepresented at Mayor Parker's emergency meeting last month. It sounds so different to listen to this group who has come here today than it did to listen to the hand-selected speakers who spoke to us at that meeting. First, the promised jobs one speaker mentioned tonight are largely temporary and seasonal. Two, only about half of the revenue the billionaires claim would come to Philly from this arena would be new. The rest would be displaced from other businesses and jobs according to their own impact study. However, I'm frankly quite tired of hearing debates about traffic and how we're going to deal with parking and pollution. Since almost, since I first moved to Philly in 2012, Chinatown has been the single most important hub for me to go to feel at home and connected to my family. I'm Taiwanese. Chinatown is not just a home for people who are Chinese. It serves the entire Asian community here. My Asian kindergarten and preschool students go to Chinatown to celebrate Lunar New Year and Harvest Festival, carrying on their family traditions from overseas. They know who they are because they're learning it from their elders, shopkeepers, restaurant owners, and so on, who live and work in Chinatown. Chinatown makes Philly home to myself and so many others. If you don't know that, you do not know your city and you do not represent us. So you cannot negotiate, not about parking, not about traffic, or any other detail of this project. You cannot negotiate your way into any version of this development that will make gentrification and displacement acceptable to Philadelphia. We are here to protect the irreplaceable, you keep hearing that word, irreplaceable, cultural treasure, 100-plus years in the making, that is Chinatown. We said no to the arena so many months ago, and no flimsy CBA from lying billionaires is going to change that. Please stop wasting our time and just say no so that we can get back to building a better Philadelphia, not just opposing something horrible.
That completes our witness list for today. Thank everybody for taking time out of your schedule for being here on this Thursday evening. This concludes the business before the committee of the whole. I recognize Councilmember Mark Squiller for motion to recess the public hearing, which we will follow up on this issue and a proposal before us today till Tuesday, November 26, 2024, at 10:00 a.m. It has a moving property segment that the committee of the whole will be recessed till Tuesday, November 26, at 2024, at 10:00 a.m. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. The motion carries, and the committee of the whole stands in recess until Tuesday, November 26, at 10:00 a.m. Everyone have a great evening and a safe trip home.